But you actually only adopt in any given year that first year. So that while you are seeing a five-year plan and you're, in effect, adopting a five-year plan, your only commitment is to the first year because that's the year that would be funded out of your operating budget. And then each successive year we would come back and all probability some changes would occur in the 12 months between now and your next budget process and we would do those adjustments at that time. In the past, some items have been, particularly vehicles and equipment, have been lease purchased where we would enter into a contract for a five to seven-year payout. The most recent example, I guess, is a ladder truck and some police vehicles a couple of years ago. So that's one possibility as a funding source as well. But this is yours now to give us some ideas as to which items you'd like to see funded first and then we'll go from there and see how much money we have to move forward.
So I would like to start with a question if I could. The vehicle replacement, I know over the years what you just alluded to. We've purchased a number through different means, a number of new vehicles for the town police department as well as other vehicles. Where do you feel like we are overall as it relates to transport?
Well, my observation of your equipment up to this point is that your, what I call, public works equipment is in real need of replacement. They are quite a bit of age on them. The police chief has indicated that some years ago, the council decided to go on a plan that every three years you would replace police vehicles in order to ensure after a period of time when they used a lot of federal grant money to replace a number of items. I personally don't think that the mileage, 100,000 is the parameter they use, is necessarily indicator of whether or not a vehicle needs to be replaced. Some need to be replaced sooner than that because of the maintenance cost, others can go, you know, much longer. My own personal vehicle, you know, was at 192,000 miles and was still going strong. So the chief would obviously like the three vehicle per year requirement, which is what you see on here. Actually, this year I only funded two of those in the three-year cycle. And there are vehicles that I think could be moved around so that they wouldn't necessarily stay with the same driver for a period of time and that could lessen the amount of miles on certain vehicles. I don't think that you have to do three a year in order to maintain a good fleet, but the chief would say otherwise.
Well, I'll follow back to public works real quick. I know when we first come on the board, their vehicles were really pathetic, really pathetic. I don't want to fall into this thing where, once again, we're strung with by three, four dump trucks, four, five trucks, it was coming out. I do want to keep this on a pace with the four today. You know, those vehicles were out really quick too. They're really worth it, they're tall, it's true. I just don't want to fall back into that where we got to go out by separate vehicles because we didn't replace them as we went along. That's, I don't think that's financially a smart thing to do. Picking up on the police vehicles, the police vehicles, I'm not disagreeing with you because you're the manager. Those cars are run 12 hours a day, sometimes 24 hours a day. So the stress on a police car is going to be far greater than any other vehicle you will use because the high speeds that they have to get up to, the safety they have to be, it's just a lot more difference in a police vehicle than it is in ordinary vehicles. You know that, I'm not telling you that you don't know. Those vehicles, I don't know how many's got stock. I don't know how many cars it got. I don't know. I know it's fire truck, whatever. We don't want that fleet, we don't want that fleet falling into this, this brewery. I don't know what he's got over there, what he's got. I want to be very conscious that we do replace them as they go along. I know when we first come on board, their vehicles were tired, especially public works. They basically walk into jobs. They're Friday loaded, they're full wheel drive, we work into. I think stuff like that is, to me, is a priority in that part.
With vehicles, a lot of the person lives within Pulaski County with five exceptions that in the past the manager and the police chief evidently agreed to. They are take-home vehicles and they do work 12-hour shifts. And I will agree that a take-home vehicle is usually better cared for than a vehicle that is rotated. And they have personal use of those vehicles inside the county as well. The last ones that they wanted to replace, I actually pulled one of those vehicles. Mileage was not at the 100,000 threshold and we redid that car and it's now a car that's used by public works. It rides a little bit rough because it's a police vehicle, but it can, on the hills that we have in town, that the previous vehicle that the individual had was not in good shape. So I think what really needs to happen is the vehicles need to be evaluated both on mileage and the care cost and, you know, some recommendation coming out of our fleet maintenance department at the same time that you have the police with their request. But we certainly have replaced police vehicles on a frequency that they are in much better shape than your public works vehicles, but they have different uses as you, as you well.
Well, with that in mind, I agree wholeheartedly that evaluating them on their individual merit makes the most sense instead of trying to make a blanket statement about, about what we need. And then using obviously what, what, what it would be wise for us to continue to keep and use. Then I think from that perspective, I think public works, given that they obviously have the, have the need, I think we need to prioritize their vehicles over a first and you work from there. That's just my initial thought.
Maybe it would help council if we had like a, some sort of a census of the vehicles and what, you know, so we can plan.
Especially if we're talking about, like Mr. Reckless said, you know, making sure we're not, if we could see that there was, you know, this dump truck is eight years old, it's got an expected life of 10 years, so, you know, we should plan to replace it in two years, whether it needs it or not. And then, you know, if we, if we still have it, it could be, you know, it would lessen the, you know, the expense of the new vehicle or so on and so forth. But it would be, I think it would help us maybe prioritize some of these purchases. I mean, I don't, I don't pretend to know what a John Deere 50, 65E tractor is, but I do know that, you know, there are some things that, you know, is it replacing something that is, you know, past its useful life, you know, for the, I mean, I know tractors are done by mile, I mean, hours instead of miles, but, I mean, having a sense of, you know, what is the critical needs so that if we don't have a vehicle of a certain kind, we can't do something. Whereas, I mean, I don't know if a skid steer is more of a, we can do more stuff if we have a skid steer in addition to a tractor. We can do different types of projects or something like that. I would, I would find that useful for myself and it might be useful for us to understand, you know, maybe this year we need to, in order to prioritize, make sure we don't get public works vehicles into a deficit, is understanding where they stand as far as that fleet goes.
And for me, it's all kind of tied in the same conversation. I understand, you know, our language, in a certain way, we don't really have an understanding just yet of what the dollar is that we're really going to have, but at the end of the day, you know, that's really going to define what we can and can't do. And I know we're specifically speaking on the general fund, but it kind of holds true through the five-year plan is it's, it's very front-loaded that, you know, it's kind of like we know, we know right in front of us that we'd like to replace these things. But like if you get down to years four and year five, you know, you, you know, I would make the assumption that they're saying that we don't expect to have to replace anything.
No, it's really that I don't think people have been through an exercise of planning that far in advance. And so to some extent, it was a struggle to get.
Right.
The way it is here, just because people have not and they haven't had the expectation that if they went through the process, that anybody would be made available for the equipment. So getting people to really get invested in the process has been a challenge and I expect that whatever we end up with this year, next year's will be better because the staff will see the result of some of that and they'll also see that the long-range planning or longer range planning helps. You know, so you do see, for example, in year two, we jumped from roughly a half a million dollars requested to a million seven. Now there's a big item in there, which is the skate park. And then the following year is in the 550,000 area, then it's those last two years that are dropping considerably because I just don't think people have had the foresight to think that far ahead. And then there's some things that aren't on here at all because we just know we can't afford them. A good example, and I hear it all the time from the staff, is the public safety building that has been talked about for years. I mean, that is millions, you know, double-digit millions that is not chipped here just because we realize it's going to probably be in that seven to 10-year, if we're lucky, range, you know, which is all for charge.
But so within, within the framework of us, obviously, we just made budget amendments that are clear that we're, you know, that there, that there are funds not available, you know, that we're, you know, we're, you know, meeting to be very frugal and not, you know, spending and less necessary. So if we're talking about public works vehicles, basically, then, you know, the first year of this would replace every single public works vehicle that we felt like needed to be replaced and then there's no more that need to be replaced in the next five years or four years. And so is that telling us, or should we assume as a council that, that all of those pieces of equipment are of such a critical nature that they have then left behind and should have already been replaced that it's like we, we need to do every single one of those pieces of public works equipment right now? And if that's the case, then we just have to budget around that and say we have no choice, that's what we've got to do. You know, fiscally, if it's not the case, then I don't know that it, you know, and kind of to Mr. Reese's point, it's, it's almost, in my opinion, the basis of the decision of what we can and can or should or shouldn't do is at this point, until we're in a better financial position, what should be based off of have-tos and not necessarily want-tos until we found ourselves with money that we could actually call a want-to pile of money. You know, and now we may be in a position, in my, in my opinion, that it's like we, we replace what we absolutely have to, run the town the right way and have what we have to have functioning the way that we have to have it, but nothing beyond that until we actually have, you know, funds that we could call disposable.
Well, there are two, there are two things I'd say about that. Number one, they're in this upcoming year because they were seen as critical. Otherwise, they would have been put in a future year. Have I mentioned that the onset, one of the options that we may have if certain vehicles are deemed a priority by the council is that we could lease finance for a much shorter period of time. So that's kind of the interim between cash financing and actual long-term debt service. And in fact, some of these vehicles might qualify for long-term financing depending on the life of the vehicle, you know, because that's how they are evaluated. First list that totals the 550,000, first of all, I would say to you that the match for the VDOT Main Street money is, has to be a priority because we've gotten a couple million dollars to do that. And we're not going to do projects in the future unless we have the match, you know. But we had, those were grants that were in the queue before I arrived. We're actually planning to do those grants two years apart, so, or, you know, a year apart. So you see that a second slug of money is needed in '22, '23 to match the second of those grants. We actually put toward the top, the repairs to 72 East Main. You remember, you had a conversation, Rick Pawnee was here and talked about those two buildings and what was needed and we prioritized those two buildings, saying if we had to do something right away, we would do 72 because we think taking the back rear off of that would make it marketable much sooner than doing the roof repairs that are needed for the two, 67 and 69, I think are the numbers. So that's been actually put out until the following year. You all may think that one's more important than 72. And maybe what we need to do is take some people on a field trip, you know, to see some of these. And again, I'm looking for guidance from you all as to what kind of information you want. We can certainly, for, and we can send it out before your next meeting, give you the age of these vehicles and the mileage on them, you know, if they are the kind that have heavy use, you know, like dump trucks or something. And I can point out which ones might be eligible for lease financing versus things that we have to do cash-wise.
I, I agree with that approach and to Mr. Reese's point. I do think a brief justification, if you will, nothing too complicated, would, would be useful. I would also like to see specifically the chief, the, the police department is, they've done a, you know, obviously they're looking five years ahead and they light it out at a set amount each year for a certain number of cars. I'd like to see something similar for the public works. That would tell me that they're looking beyond their immediate need and, and really thinking through what their inventory is and what kind of vehicles they have and what, what type of vehicles they're going to need in the future. So I would like to see that as well.
I mean, I think we could say, you know, it should be that all departments should have a capital, I mean, that have capital needs, should have a capital component to their budget that, yeah, we can allocate every year, but we should build it into the budget. It seems to me, you know, I mean, I think the water fund does that, sewer fund should do that and, you know, whether it's public works or the police department or the fire department, you know, I mean, the fire department's probably a little bit more, you know, periodic, you know, you're not buying a fire truck every year, but, you know, if we put money aside for a fire truck every year, it wouldn't be $300,000 in one year. We could split that, if we split that up over a certain number of years, it seems to me that, you know, a dedicated amount of our funding should go to some of those things since they are expenses that we know we're going to run into, having that, you know. And I don't know how to calculate that, I mean, at least the staff's expertise, but it seems like we could adopt that and have, you know, a capital fund or at least a budget for that relative to what that looks like.
Well, I guess as an example, when the fire chief first proposed his new fire engine, it was listed for 2022.
Okay.
And then as we looked at, you know, what was here and how it was prioritized, you know, he came in and said to me, I'm willing to move that back. Now, my personal thought is that, the way I've done finances in the past, is you don't really split a project like that into two years because to order
Right.
the truck, you have to be able to say you've got the amount to pay for.
Right.
We just don't pay for it that way. So I'm old school and say, I need all $600,000 in one year, even though I'm not going to pay it out in one year, but I have to have the authority, the authorization
Sure.
to be able to enter into a purchase order for that larger amount.
Oh, no, no, that makes perfect sense. I just meant as like a, just part of our budgeting process, it seems to me that, you know, even if the department doesn't necessarily spend it every year, that they should be allocating a certain percentage of their budget.
And the problem with that
With the view towards, maybe we won't spend $100,000 on the dump truck this year, but next year, you know, and then, you know, that way, you know.
Well, that cannot be in the operating budget.
No, no, I understand that, but I just meant, I mean, you know, within our, our own way of understanding it, you know.
And that's exactly what the staff has been doing. And it doesn't, and when it gets funded in previous years and doesn't get spent because it's identified as a reserve, you know, a building of funds. And when it's done that way, it falls to fund balance and it doesn't go forward as a reserve. So if you're going to, if you want to identify certain things that want to build funds over multiple years, then it needs to be in the capital budget. At $100,000 a year because you need, in five years, you need a half a million dollars. And that's been part of the challenge and the frustration of the departments because they've had many times in the budget, a portion that's been called capital outlay and most of them have been identified as we're building a reserve, gateway reserve or the reservoir reserve or water line replacement or sewer line replacement, but it's not spent in that year and it wasn't planned to be spent in that year. And they have thought that those reserves were carried forward and they haven't been. In fact, had they been carried forward, your fund balances would be even less because those monies, when unspent, have dropped to their respective fund balance. So we've got to find a way to capture these things and I'm fine with, with showing people how to do that, that make sure that the money is building to that time when it's all needed.
Okay.
And I hear your point and we'll work on that.
I mean, even, even if it's not necessarily like, you know, just like this is, you know, we are, we are considering, we're not spending it this year because we're expecting to spend it in year three, but, you know, we would like you to consider, you know, putting it aside or something like that.
Well, we need to, we need to find a way to put that in
The capital budget.
Like the capital budget
Yeah, that makes sense.
For that purpose and then identify it as a reserve.
Yeah, you know, if we're going to, we're going to buy that fire truck in 2022, we'll put a certain amount aside next year or however we decide to do it.
Right.
I'm going to have another question regarding, just, just as a conversation, the repairs to 67 and 69, I understand that's the, the parapet issue.
Well, it's a parapet for one of them for sure, but then one of them also has some interior problems. In fact, a couple of them are fallen through the floor. So it's really the idea of, and that one, actually, they had put that down at $15,000 for each one. And I said, why not put it off for a year and do them both at the same time because there'd be some economy of doing that. But we could split that out and it could be $15,000 for each one.
Well, I guess
If one of them wanted to take one of those.
What do we, I mean, I guess you'd have, I guess my, my question is, what is our 30,000 versus sitting on the property for an additional year or so? And I don't have to answer that question, I just thought I'd throw it, bring it up.
Yeah, well, and the thought there, but again, this is why we're having this discussion, was what would move probably the fastest if we repaired it? And that's why we selected 72. I think I even may have shared with you that I went inside that building with a prospective purchaser, you know, only to find a condition that I would allow the building to be shown again in that condition.
72 is next to Warburton's, is that next to the law office on?
No, it's next to an office that a woman has put in a
It's, it's two down.
Yeah, it's on Health
It's, it's that same road.
It's in that stretch?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, there's a, there's Warburton, that there's a new medical office, that one, and then the dental stuff is out there.
I'm going to make sure I have the right one, so I'll open the night up.
Yes, I would just say, I have no issue with the prioritization of the, of the list. I mean, in, in the thinking of the public works vehicles needing to be replaced and items, and I would certainly argue second year million-dollar skate park seems, you know, like a, like a pipe dream, you know, in our current financing world, but it's prioritized at the bottom of the list, you know, to start with. And I think the way, you know, the way that it's lined out, if you read it through there, I have no issue with, with, and I agree with what you said with the, you know, the VDOT matching, obviously a have-to, I mean, those are things we've got to do. You know, for me, at that point in time, my only issue would be, again, what's already been said is, is really, you know, we, you know, understanding three, four, and five, understanding how critical the vehicles actually are and if the month, you know, and then once we get to the point that we understand how much money we actually have, you know, the list will shape up itself based off what we actually physically can do and can't do either through financing options or actually having money available to do it. But from a, specifically from a priority standpoint, I have no issue with, with how they're laid out, but just.
The, the other big ticket item, one, that's the water under the water sewer fund, the rebuild of the filters. Do you agree that that needs, I mean, it is certainly a priority without question. We've rebuilt two now, I think, for
Yes.
Two, two and four?
We're in the process, four's been replaced for the process of doing two, so we have one and three, there's still two.
What, what, is there any funding available there or any type of financing available there or would that even be worth pursuing?
Here, here are funds. They tend to be with the Department of Health and then financed through VRA. In fact, that's the source of the money that we have for the growth lot project. They tend to be a grant loan package, depending on the size of the project. Same thing is true with sewer. Sewer funds are available through the Department of Environmental Quality. You generally have to have at least a design ready before you go for those funds and they can be significant loan, what they call principal forgiveness, which is essentially a, a grant, and then zero interest loans from DEQ. The real issue for grants, number one, I'm trying to get us really under our belts, the existing grants. And then in terms of managing grants and writing grants, we don't have staff really to do that. If, as we get into budget, I'll probably talk to you, not today, but at a future meeting about staffing needs and I do think, even though I'm shifting some people around as we do some things, that we are short-staffed in two areas that I really think for us to move in an accelerated way, we're probably going to need to have somebody that's devoted full-time to not just grant writing, but grant management. Sometimes the easiest thing is getting the money.
Right.
The hardest thing is managing it. And like in the case of the fact that we have three grants for the James Harley project, each one of those grantees has different requirements. And you have to, you know, constantly be looking at each one of those before you make a move. You know, we can't spend ARC money and DHCD money on engineering, but we can spend it with the EVA money, but that has to be matched dollar for dollar, but then the other two grantees have to review the RFP before you can send it out, even though they're not paying for it. You know, so it's that kind of thing, managing those nuances, that really requires some oversight. So if we're going to move into more grant writing, you know, I think we need some resources to really manage that and to get somebody who has that experience and not just somebody who you're going to train to do that. It's not easy. And then the finance side of it, you know, is even more complicated because each one has a separate drawdown and match requirement and other kinds of things. So even if we do as I suggested and not accept a grant till we have the match and then set them up separately, you know, then you still have some issues.
So it, so it sounds like that position that you're, you're going to be proposing could potentially pay for itself to manage.
Oh, could, but, yeah, but I don't think we ought to have it as a consultant relationship. I think it needs to be established.
Okay. Yeah, we've, we've been down that road.
Well, the management of staff is easier.
Right, exactly.
Shouldn't be, but it is.
On the replacement of the water lines on Main Street, on the water fund, the $670,000, is that tied to, that is tied to the Main Street project as you said and discussed it, that you, is it a, a necessary $670,000 that we would, you know, that needs to be done? Yeah, it's listed kind of as a low priority on here, but I
If we want to use the opportunity, which I think we should. If we want to use the opportunity, which I think we should, to replace and upgrade the water lines that are in the street, the time to do it is when you're tearing up the street. Not put a pavement down and three or five years from now come in and say, okay, now we're gonna replace the water lines. And we do need, as we bring the downtown forward and get more interest in restaurants and sprinkler systems and everything, we're gonna need to have increased water capacity within those lines. So it's the right time to do it.
And would that be the kind of project that would make sense, the finance?
Finance or go after some funding sources, yeah.
Just it's, because that's the kind of thing that should take, I mean, it, there's a long depreciation for that compared to some of these other ones. And is there not, is there a, is there currently a budget for just general, there, I see this forty thousand dollars for water line replacements. Is that just, is that currently being done, or is that an addition, or is that?
That's the building of reserve that you were talking about.
Okay, but so they're not actually doing forty thousand dollars for a year, okay.
They had a.
And I, and I know that doesn't, it, it's not always easy to do, you know, a set amount, but I mean, it seems like we should be doing water and sewer replacements.
We're doing mostly repairs, and what I've said to the staff is, after you repair it twice, then you need to replace it.
Okay.
But you don't necessarily replace the whole line, you may replace a section of the line, you know, that is causing frequent repairs. To go in and wholesale replace, you know, three hundred and fifty feet, you know, of, of water line is gonna cost more than forty thousand dollars.
No, 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 that I understand, but I mean, it, it seems like with the age of some of our infrastructure that that's just gonna happen eventually. I mean, I know there was a big project up in the sort of, up by the Northwood School, that they did a large amount of replacement work. And it just, and I don't know how that expanded specifically, but it seems like there's probably some places that would benefit from, you have economies of scale at least, you know, if you're gonna tear up the streets, you might as well, like you were saying, tear up streets. Um, and I don't know if we, if we have a plan for that, or that, how does that?
I don't believe that we have a master plan for water line replacement. Um, that's something that we should have. In fact, if you have those kind of plans, and then the gas company comes in, or the telecommunications company comes in, um, you can plan certain times that you'll do certain projects. And then in fact, you know, if you do it right, um, the gas company doesn't come in and tear up a street that you just paved. You have to.
Right.
Because you have a plan for it, and actually, you get really technical and require, if you have plans uh, and the other utilities don't adhere to it, then they have to put the street back to the way it's in, which, yeah, with the same level of pavement and other things, as opposed to seeing, you know, these patches that you see often.
And, and is there, I mean, maybe, I don't know what it would look like, but to generate that kind of plan, um, even, even on a pilot basis, um, even for like certain sections of town, but is that a, I mean, I don't know what that would cost, but could we get a, some sort of wrap our head around kind of?
I can get the cost.
Yeah, I mean, because I think, you know, if, if, you know, there's rumors of an infrastructure plan, and my guess is, like the last big infrastructure plan, you know, it's gonna prioritize projects that are as close to shovel-ready as possible. And I would really like to see, you know, I would rather spend a little bit of money now and able to grab as much of those grants and, you know, you know, stimulus, infrastructure, whatever you wanna call them, funds later. But if, if, I'm happy to spend um, a little bit upfront to be in a better position to do that.
Uh, would you all find it helpful for me to ask Bill Coggo to maybe come to your next meeting? And then we can both give you some information in writing on some of your questions, and then also have him here to answer directly some of your questions. He's flying back from Key West, so that's why he's not here tonight. But I didn't want to put off any longer getting some reaction from you all about the capital budget.
Yes, your question, uh, on heavy equipment, I think I brought this up a few years ago. Like, uh, I know that the water department is looking at a new four-wheel drive backhoe, but it's not twenty-two, twenty-three. What is your opinion on like heavy equipment, like at leasing?
Leasing it or lease purchasing it, are you talking about just leasing it from a company?
Yes, ma'am, a lot of companies lease their heavy equipment, and every three years, they automatically get a new one. Uh, what, what versus, what, how much money, we're looking at this new one as approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand then, what would it be to lease one, and then every two, and they're responsible for heavy part, every two to three years, you would be getting a new one anyway, instead of we buying one every, I don't know when the last one we bought, to be honest with you. I don't even know if it's feeding one, I'm just asking, what's your opinion?
For certain pieces of equipment that you don't use on a regular basis, you know, day in and day out, you're better off leasing.
Purchase.
And anytime you have a big project, uh, the community that I came from, we demolished a bunch of old buildings that were on a railroad site. We didn't have the equipment to do it, but we rented it. And you never want to buy something that was single purpose, or, you know, or not, not use it for, you know, another four or five years. But for equipment that you're gonna be using day in and day out, I don't think I would recommend just leasing. I would say you need to make the investment.
You recommend just buying it straight out?
But you might buy it on a, as I was saying earlier, a lease purchase arrangement, where you wouldn't have to expend all of the money in any given year, and so it's like a mini debt, because you have a much shorter term. And some of your local banks usually are willing to finance those kinds of arrangements because they're small, a shorter period of time, as opposed to a twenty-year debt on, let's say, a two million dollar project. You did go uh, into debt, which surprised me, a very small uh, project, just before the end of last fiscal year, and that financed, I think it was two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I wouldn't have quit that amount of money on a long-term, yeah. So that would be one of the first things I'd try to take off if you suddenly um, had a, a windfall. And something that we're also looking at is, you know, the current debt that we have and what we're paying, the finance charges, the interest rates, to see if we ought to refinance, you know, as interest rates are changing. Sometimes it's too expensive to do that. So I'll have Bill here for next time, and I'll get you all the information on the age of these various uh, vehicles. And anything else that you all are interested in at this point?
I wanna skip through over here to something you might even want to get uh, Chief to uh, come and uh, explain. I know what the orbit, most other counties, night vision weapon sighting says is the eighteen thousand. Uh, that's something he might want to come, or you, you bring one and show whatever, so most of the council know what that is. I've had, had one of my, what is that? Well, that'd be a good time for him to show what that is and how it works in his, the park. Uh, I don't know how you want him, if you want to tell you what to do, that would be, be something to do.
And, and you, uh, you, you may have already said it, Mr. Burks, but just as far as what, what the intended use of the, say, the new tractor's gonna be, and whatever, of the four-wheel drive.
I'll give you something on that, and then I'm gonna put Bill in front of you, if you can.
Okay.
All the questions that we don't answer. That's playback, you know.
I wonder if it's about the uh, oh, no. You want to put the, the bill in there?
Well, you could, you could prod me on it, I know an awful lot about it, because I've spent a lot of time with it in my previous life.
Well, I kind of, it's, it's, when it comes, I'm looking at, uh, uh, yeah. Um, I think our biggest concern due was the replacement, manhole cover.
Yeah, you mentioned that, and I talked to him about that with the idea that, and we are using both. Uh, both the manholes, the half-holes, and then the ones that are sealed, you know, completely. Um, probably some of our biggest I and I, of course, you know, you're never gonna get rid of all of it. In fact, I think the gentleman, Ryan Hendricks, who was here last time, said something similar. Uh, but some of your storm drains are just as big a problem as your old lines, you know, having infiltration from cracks and age and everything else. Um, and we probably need to, just in the same way that you talked about master water plant, we probably need a storm drainage plant even before I and I plan, that would be addressing just the, the lines themselves. Uh, let's make, let's put Bill on the spot regarding your manhole covers, how's that?
Thank you. There's no more discussion about that, we'll just move on to the council comments. And Mr. Penn, do you have any comments today?
Oh, no, probably, well, one thing, um, is looking on the two oh one, then they complained about the uh, bullets, bullets.
Those are jam, and, and I've had people complain that somebody is shooting at them, which we shouldn't, what were the actors?
Two oh, two oh one, then, second.
Okay.
We had a noise channel in the past years that we set off on a regular basis, which apparently had some impact on.
It just, it just moved them from one place to another. I mean, from my experience, it, you know, they were in the cemetery, they shut off fireworks, they moved down the street, they shut off fireworks, they moved up the street, you know, I mean.
They gotta live somewhere.
Yeah.
The, but they are leases, so, nasty leases.
I'll check that particular area, I know, uh, early on, and I come in here, there, we did get one complaint um, in an area, I don't think they're the same address, but I'll go back and look.
We're also, we're also, we can also get a permit to remove some of them, is that correct?
Mr. Dawson, do you have?
No comment today.
Mr. Reese?
No, Mr. Murray, thank you.
Mr. Ray?
It's a little bit, uh, in fact, there are a bunch of Ms. Burks, I'm, I, I know she's already jumped in this thing, I feel a hundred percent confidence that you've already cut in, and you know where it's gotta go, and, and you operate it, so I'm a hundred percent behind. Uh, more budget activities, I probably look forward, first time in a long time, I'm pulling through a budget film. But uh, I appreciate all the work you've done up to this point with it, too. You've done a good job.
The staff is working with me very hard on this, and I'm excited really about being able to be involved.
That's very good. Mr. Clark, do you have anything?
Nothing, I'll save it.
Mr. Reese?
Uh, no. I have one, um, sorry. So I would like for you to see if you can find out, apparently, um, a previous, let us, you know, someone informed me had said that if, goes back to the skate park, they have funds, they got funds that we would the town would match it. And I've been asked by a couple of people about this. Um, just wanna make sure that those funds didn't go to me to build a pool, an indoor pool that I don't have. But um, but um, but no, that, I've had multiple people asking me about where those funds are. I don't know that we've seen them.
I don't think they've ever been turned over to the town. I think that whoever started that effort, and it's my understanding that there was a comment that they would be matched. Uh, but I think a separate account was set up by the individuals promoting that. Um, and actually, to my knowledge, the council's not been asked to match what they have, but I will tell you that matching what I understand, is going to create what is desired. And that's why, um, and in fact, I did have posted today, um, a comment that I had Jordan prepare that explains exactly where we are with that process, that the money that the town has received uh, is strictly for remediation of the property, that the soils are contaminated and in a present condition, that site could not be used for any recreational purpose, uh, that our intent is to use, uh, the money, the grant that we got, uh, to remediate the site and to put proper soil on it. And if we have any funds left over, to maybe do um, some minor um, concrete paving work, you know, for uh, basketball courts or something. But that's why you have what was an estimate of, three years ago, uh, the cost to do that skate park as it was envisioned by the consultants that you all had at that time. But there's no money that the town has set aside, and to the best of my knowledge, has never been received.
And also.
Now, as far as your pool, I think it's, I, I have seen that it's outside.
It is outside, and it was also being paid by, yes, which started years ago. Um, another issue with that, or not issue, but another question about that is just that if they were able to draw in money from a, don't, someone that would donate money, um, we would happily help put that in, right? With the money that they are donating.
Well, we need to make sure that whatever money is spent is spent in a way that furthers that plan. Um, so we have to look at how much money was available, and what could we, you know, do with that amount? Or we might, as we've talked about with the capital budget, we might put it in a reserve, go ahead and put our match toward whatever that is, still demonstrating the commitment that the town has to the project. But the project's not gonna happen until we amass a certain amount of money, or issue debt, or whatever arrangement we want to make in order to make the full vision happen.
And we're, I just want the public to know that we are not against the skate park, it's not that at all. It's when we get the mon- the funds, then that's when we can move forward. All right, um, that's all I have for tonight, so if you want to move on with your management report then?
I'm gonna do like the rest of you and say no comment.
All right, well, then, before we're done with that, then a reminder of the future council meeting is April sixth, twenty twenty-one, uh, here in the council chambers, closed session starts at five thirty, public session starts at seven. April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, council work session, closed session at five o'clock, public session starts at six thirty.
Mr. Mayor, I just, because you asked me, and I said in the column, I just, something just came to mind. Um, we have a number of high school teams of various sports that have brought some significant recognition to themselves and to the county and to their school as a result of their performance at various statewide events. And we are working on a plan, uh, subject to what the coach determines, to recognize those individual groups. I'm just curious if, uh, the council might consider, uh, maybe a special afternoon meeting about the time that school adjourns, that maybe you all could go to the school, and we could recognize those various groups, uh, at the school, as opposed to scheduling them here in council chambers. Because unless the governor changes the number of people that can meet together, it would be, um, several meetings before we could, uh, meet with those groups. But if you all are interested, we could offer that, uh, to the school as another way. And I think, having heard from Dave, uh, and others, that we've done this in the past, um, and I think this year we've got an unusual number of athletic groups that have excelled, that that might be something you want to do, and might be a little bit of a fun thing for you as opposed to sitting here working on capital budgets and other types of things.
It's a field trip, right?
A field trip, yes.
I don't know why, I think capital budgets are fun.
Capital budgets are fun? But if you all are real people, we're fine.
Yeah, I, I, I'm agreeable with everybody else, I like, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right, we'll work on that, thank you, I'm sorry, I just made you two.
Excellent.
With that, I'm Eunuch Durn.
And Alan Taylor.
Hi.